Good morning. We'll call the special media October 4th on vacation home rental discussion to order. A roll call would show all commissioners, except for Commissioner Persky, present at the moment. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I guess the only thing on the agenda today is the discussion related to vacation rentals. Shelley, do you want to start it off?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. And Mr. Persky is here. So, all members are here. That makes us all feel a lot better. We're glad you're safe. So, we do have some information that was put in Board Agenda Packet. And Angie Berg is here to go through that with you. This is not a public hearing, so this is discussion amongst the board on all of the items that we had had to date. We took the information and put it into a more of an ordinance format, so hopefully that was easier for you to read. And if you have questions, we'll certainly address those as they come up. And I will turn it over to Angie Berg.
Good morning, Commissioners. Angie Berg, Environmental Services. So, this meeting is being webcast. As Commissioner Notch stated, it is not a public hearing. The county board has had over six meetings to talk about this topic in the last few months, not including public hearings that you've had on the same topic. Recommended board action today really is just to get as far through this as you would like. If that's all of the way, then that's all of the way. If you want to stop, then we stop and we regroup. The board did have a public hearing in August, and that public hearing, upon the recommendation from the department, was closed. And it would be up to the board to decide if you wanted another public hearing on this topic. You would not be required to. By law, you held your public hearing, you did the notice, and this is your deliberation to decide what, if anything, you're going to change for the ordinance. We have several attachments here. First of all, we have the guide, which basically just walks through each step of the attachments. We have our track changes version, the county comparison, which you've all seen before, good neighbor guide. That would just be a kind of a friendly handout, nothing required in the ordinance, discussion on fees, and then lastly, administration and enforcement. So, a little bit in the trends. Shelley and I did some work with our assessor's office to come up with a little bit of data. And some of it's interesting, some of it's probably predictable. But in the past five years, the trend from cabins to year-round homes on lakes has increased by about 2%. That's pretty flat considering, you know, what's happened. But interestingly, I think in five years, what's that number going to look like? I think it's going to be a lot higher with what we've been seeing. Again, not surprising, 80% of the cabins are riparian. So, that's where we're seeing a lot of vacation home rentals also. And this one was interesting to me. There's about, there's only about 500 more riparian year homes or cabins than there are seasonals. So, there's, the number is about the same, the number of cabins on lakes compared to the number of year-round residences. Again, I think that trend is probably nationwide, or at least in the state, on the upturn, but time will tell in the next few years. So, as is typical, when we go through ordinance amendments, we do a track, what we call track changes. So, we take the ordinance and then we make amendments, so you can see what's being struck and what's being added. That's what I'm showing on the screen and also on Packet Page 5. The change here for our definition section is really just to change with the industry standard. There's a lot more nationwide people calling vacation private home rental, short-term rentals. The definition is the same, but the title would change. The next section is really required regardless of whether or not we do anything with vacation home rentals. If you end up not adopting anything today, we would bring this language back. This just beefs up our provisional use section a little bit. Upon looking at it and comparing it to some of our other sections, we realize that it needs to be a little bit more detailed. So, I don't plan on going through this section four, but what I will tell you, it does is basically provides for a process if someone is not complying with a provisional use. This is very similar to the language in interim and conditional use. So, it just provides a little bit more background as far as how this section would be administered. Mr. Chair, should I just keep going unless I'm stopped?
Yeah, I would say just go through it and come back if somebody has a question on it.
Okay, so next is where we get into the actual vacation or short-term rental standards. What you see in red is what was recommended and reviewed by the Stearns County Planning Commission back in July. So, that is also similar to the spreadsheet that you all had at one point, and it's just basically taking the spreadsheet and putting it into a different format. So, this proposal would allow for short-term rentals as a provisional use, which is basically a permitted use that you register with Stearns County, and it would not require a public hearing. So, eight or less, eight or less occupants for a short-term rental would be provisional use. More than eight would be an interim use. That is, I would say, I don't know if I want to say the trend. That's what a lot of counties are doing right now. A lot of counties are doing a lot of different things, by the way. We are, I would say, probably in the top third of doing something on this topic. We've acknowledged it, we're calling it out, we're defining it, we're talking about it some more, we're trying to reply, you know, respond to the trends that are occurring. Some counties are doing not a whole lot of anything, and some are, no one's prohibiting it, that much I know. But I would say the eight or less, or the more than eight, I do know that is what Pope County does, and that's what Douglas County's doing, as far as our neighbors are concerned. So, number A would go into basically some of the requirements that we would be asking for upon application. Documentation from the local fire department that the property can be served. Documentation that the property lines have been staked. The idea there is that the property lines are defined and known by the rental property and by the neighbors. So, those areas would be respected. Number F is the idea that we had found that some of the metro areas do documentation that the owner sent notice to the township and neighbors within 500 feet, notifying them of their intent to rent. So, this would be a preemptive rent, a renter wanting, someone wanting to rent, reaching out to the neighbor saying, here's what we want to do, and that would be before they hear from Stearns County first. And then G is the completed short-term rental consultation form. So, as we've explained in the past, the department has two roles. We act as zoning administrator, so we enforce all the land use and zoning restrictions, and we're delegated by Minnesota Department of Health to do food, beverage, and lodging inspections. So, if you think about, as you know, the land use is how to use it, what kind of permit it's going to be, and the food, beverage, and lodging side is, I would think of it as the health and safety. Are the windows big enough? Are there smoke detectors? Is there ingress and egress? Water temperature, all of those sorts of things. So, that's what G is. They have had to have had that evaluation done, realize what improvements they would need to make to the unit to make it safe. Okay, moving on to B. We're proposing that we break up overnight occupancy and daytime occupancy. And the idea there is both related to potentially nuisance and to sewage treatment capacity. So, the proposal is the overnight capacity be no more than one person for every 75 gallons. So, again, we would be proposing that less people would be allowed on a septic system than more, from going from 50 gallons per day to 75 gallons per day. And then, secondly, that overnight would mean we would specify a time, 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. So, the expectation would be from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., only those number of people that are allowed according to the permit slash septic system is all who could occupy the structure in the evening hours, the nighttime hours. C would be a little bit of a twist. That would be a daytime occupancy, and so we're calling that out to be one and a half times the overnight capacity or the parking capacity, whichever is more restrictive. So, we would evaluate that when someone is applying to do a vacation home rental. The overnight and the daytime capacity is also something that some other counties are looking towards. I think it gets to the concern about special events being held on the property during the day, concerns with parking, overusing the septic system, et cetera. So, that is what we're proposing under B and C. We are proposing C be struck, and that states on-premise signs are prohibited. We do have a very substantial sign section of the ordinance, and it is based on some federal law changes that we enacted years ago. And so, signs are allowed. This use shouldn't prohibit them. Sometimes people want signs for various reasons, and so we're proposing that that be stricken, and our sign section would be applicable. Number E talks about the septic system. This would be a change where we would require a certification every three years of that septic system. Talked to staff this morning, it's probably around $750 to $1,000 right now to have a septic certification done. So, that would be an additional cost once every three years.
Mr. Chair. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Persky.
Angie, just looking at those numbers, you know, I'm not a sewer expert, wouldn't claim to be, but how does that work as far as existing homes now? Does that fit within the normal range? Would that exclude a good number of properties that are existing that people are living in? I have no idea.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, the answer is it depends. It would not exclude completely. It might reduce the number of occupancies slightly, depending on the gallons per day per person.
Because your septic is designed per bedroom of the home, correct?
Per person, per bedroom? I can find out, or we can find out. Per bedroom. Okay.
I'm just thinking that there's, you know, there's maybe a number of older homes or old cabins that people are thinking they're going to be able to use as a rental, but this is going to preclude them from doing that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, the only thing preventing 100% of the time someone from renting out because of their septic is the holding tank. If you have, I mean, it's all based on size. The bigger, the bigger the drain field, the more people that you have. I think the change from 50 to 75 is just to provide a little bit more safety factor to that septic system. But it would not preclude, because if you have a drain field, we just take the total amount of square footage of that drain field, we divide it by 75, that comes up with how many occupancies. So, one thing that I would suggest that we do, and I will do at some point, is, this is showing on the screen right now is a list of the current rentals that we have. And what we would do at some point, depending on where the board goes with this today, is we would do an evaluation of all of these, and their septic systems, and let the property owners know, would that change their occupancy? Because it could. But we did not do that in preparation for today, because we really didn't know if you would support that concept or not.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, just really quickly, since we're on that, do you have any idea what the cost is to expand a holding tank?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, to add a drain field, typically, I would say, if you have a drain field, if you have a holding tank, the only reason you have a holding tank is because you don't have room, physical space on your property to have a drain field. The answer would be if you do have a holding tank, and you, for whatever reason, it was permitted, we don't allow holding tanks now for new construction.
That's what I thought, that's why I was asking. So, I'm sorry, I might have misheard you. So, what they need is a big enough drain field.
Right. They need a drain field. If they have just a holding tank, it's automatically prohibited, and that's been the case since we adopted in 2008. For someone to install a drain field, I mean, the cost would be between $10,000 and $20,000, potentially, depending on if it's a mound system, what the soils are, how big it is, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
No other changes to E, G, H, I, J. These are all things that are staying the same. Also, staying the same with K, although the K talks about no more than two vacation home rentals will be allowed on a parcel. I think the Planning Commission, I think the Planning Commission might have debated that just a little bit, whether or not one versus two is, you know, should we stay with one? Should we go with two?
Angie, how many parcels would actually have two?
Right, and that's another good point, Mr. Notch. If we're talking just shoreline, it'd be very limited, because in order to have accessory dwelling unit slash guest cottages, you need to have, your lot size basically needs to be double. It would be maybe outside of shoreline, where you might see this come up a little bit more. Inside shoreline, I would say, it would be far and few between, where this would even be an option. And we haven't had any either, even inquiries, as far as I know.
I suppose it could happen if you had, let's say, an old farm site where you had two homes that were probably on there. Yeah, I would think too, it'd be very limited where you actually have two.
And the proposal, Mr. Chair, would be is if you're proposing, if we kept the standard K the same, which is up to two, that would be an automatic interim use. So, that wouldn't be strictly permitted. L is more just tying in our enforcement section. Nothing in our enforcement section is changing. It's, the enforcement section for the zoning ordinance applies from everything to animal feedlots to wind energy, from A to Z. This is just making a tie. M is something that the board, I know, has kind of toyed with in the past a little bit. I think Commissioner Bergen brought this concept up originally, is what if the terms of the rental are based on the number of years? So, currently, again, our vacation home rentals are interim, which means everyone has a public hearing, goes in front of the Planning Commission, comes to the county board. Under this proposal, again, eight or less would be permitted, but there would still be this tie to the number of years. So, your initial request for a vacation home rental under either scenario would be two years. And if there's no infractions during that time, meaning documented violations, then your second request would be given for three, third and subsequent would be every five. That talks about the zoning part. That's, that does not talk about the license. A license from the lodging side is still an annual license. So, food, beverage, and lodging staff go out every single year to these sites and visit them for the health, safety part. This would be, again, the zoning part. Thoughts or questions on that, or just keep?
I guess, excuse me, I was thinking about going back to the beginning of everything here and going through. I have several questions or clarifications I'd like, and I would have probably something on here I'd like to discuss.
Okay.
I have to finish the last page and...
Sounds good. N talks about the, really just spells out kind of the enforcement side of things or the violations, stating that department will notify the owner if violation is documented, and it's specifying that one written warning permit per permit cycle will be issued before the revocation process is outlined. Shelley and I have spent considerable time talking with neighbors to vacation home rentals in the last few months. Last week, we spent over three hours with a group, and this was one topic that we talked a lot about, was enforcement violations, et cetera. In the past, as is common with all of our land use, it's department discretion. When do we take the next step to enforcement? When do we take the next letter? When do we go to revocation? When do we go to the attorney? When is there a summons and complaint? This really is just defining it a little bit more, that if you have one infraction, one documented violation during your permit cycle, if you have, then you're okay. If you have more than one, then it's a public hearing for revocation, which, again, doesn't mean it's revoked. It means that the Planning Commission has a hearing to consider the facts. Let's see, out of the list of, on that same topic, of the 23 that we have, two current rentals have received their first notice, just to give you perspective. And that does not include the one that was revoked about a year ago. O, we talk about quiet hours being 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. P is an emergency contact. That's something that the county, the Planning Commission and the board have been doing for some time. It's just not been written in the ordinance this way. It's always just been a condition. So, they need to have a emergency contact available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The part that we've never done before that this is proposing would be that they would have to respond within 30 minutes. And if you note, respond doesn't mean in person at this point. Respond could also be a phone call. It could be if law enforcement gets called out on a weekend, that this number is available for somebody to contact. We're also proposing in P, that last sentence, is that the property owner contact information shall be accessible on the Stearns County website. The idea related to that is that, you know, nights and weekends, we're not, environmental services staff isn't working, law enforcement obviously is. Sometimes it's hard for people to find out who the emergency contact is. So, the idea is that neighbors would be able to go online, look up who's responsible, and hopefully call them first to try to manage the issue. And if not, then that number would be available for us to take the next step. Q talks about required lot size. I know during some of your public hearings recently on this issue, you've heard a lot, the lots really small. There's homes and cabins so close. So, the idea with Q is that the lot size, required lot size be 66%. Basically, that number, if you remember back from August, that 66% comes from the DNR shoreline rules. And while this, we know this does apply to all property, not just shoreline, we wanted to stay consistent with 66%, because, for example, on a 40,000-square-foot recreational development lake, such as the chain of lakes, many of the lakes, minimum lot size is 40,000. If you have less than 2/3, that means you have less than 26,400 square feet, and you would not be allowed to even propose a vacation home rental. That also goes with the lot width. So, if you have a really narrow lot and very closer to neighbors, then you would also be precluded from applying.
So, Angie, of the 23, are any of the ones we currently have not meet this?
16 meet the standard, and the rest do not. So, one of the other ideas that we were kind of toying with in the department would be you could grandfather those in, if you will, and say that the ones that, the ones that are currently licensed and permitted upon the adoption of this ordinance would not have to meet that standard. So, that could be an option. R came from the public hearing that you had back in August, and I would like to say that R was not discussed by the Planning Commission, so in all fairness to them, they did not weigh in on this standard. This came during your public hearing on August 2nd, and it talks about outdoor cameras. The idea with that would be for enforcement. I can tell you that when we get a call on Monday or Tuesday and from neighbors saying... I can tell you that when we get a call on Monday or Tuesday and from neighbors saying there was partying going on, they were violating the nighttime standard, there was too many cars, there was too many people, it's very hard for us to unwind time and go see what happened out there and have any documentation. So it was suggested by a former vacation home rental owner that this be one way to accomplish that goal. Again, albeit controversial, something for discussion. That's all, that's all these items are. S, again, this is a standard the planning commission has enacted and as a condition for properties that are near water. There would be some safety requirements for, safety sign requirements and flotation devices. So that is currently, Mr. Chair, what we're proposing for the standards. And I'm thinking you might want to go back through them before we moved on to the next section.
Okay. Anybody want to start with a question you might have?
Yeah, I can do that.
Need to go back to the page.
Angie, one thing, quick, your wallet is looking. Does a permit have to be posted now, or would any of this require that there's something noticed outside that it's a vacation rental?
Mr. Chair, do you mean in terms of a sign?
Yeah, like, I don't know what the sign would say, but
It's not required. Right now, it's not allowed, but with a proposal, it could be allowed. Where it might be a, you know, Steve's cabin.
Well, I just think of, you know, when a feedlot expands, they're supposed to stick that feedlot permit onsite, so if somebody comes, they can see they have a permit.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
You could make, I mean, you could take the opposite approach of what we have now that's prohibited. You could require it. That would be the only other option.
Mr. Chair, off of that one, I mean, so there isn't anything required to show the license inside somewhere? Or the permit, so to me, it wouldn't necessarily be outside, it would be inside that you'd be showing it. We've stated a number of Airbnbs or VRBOs and they always seem to have something posted, including "you need to be quiet by 10 o'clock", things like that.
Yeah, that's all internal, like on a board.
Somewhere.
Mr. Chair, it's my understanding that the sanitarians, when they go do their review, and we have our license for public health and safety, they have issued that, and then that is an internal posting of that licensure, so
It does get posted somewhere.
I believe they post those, yes.
Because that would even be good for contact information, because, you know, if I rented the vacation rental, but I have, you know, family members, oh, if something happens, you know, they might not know who to contact, I might know, but they might not.
Right, and I believe that would be part of, but most places that I have seen have contact information for that on an internal, you know, in their booklet.
Yep. Commissioner Mergan?
Well, I'm on page five, I just wanted this. It says the transient patients shall be period of time less than 30 days. Is that a little too long? Should that be maybe 15 days? As far as the short term?
Commissioner Mergan, are you looking at the definition?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, right on page five, it's under use.
I think, isn't it over 30 doesn't require a IUP or anything like that, right?
Yes, I think the idea way back when, when we enacted the less than 30 was that it would not require a license in this process for someone who rents out their home on a monthly basis. That was the 30-day, anything less than that. Anything less than 30 would fall under a rental. Anything more than 30 days, if I rent out Steve's farmhouse, we don't fall under this process if we have a 30-day period where we have an agreement to do that.
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, Angie, you know, with St. John's and St. Ben's, we might have a unique situation where a professor or staff could maybe be using that as a home rental during the school year, but then they would use it as a vacation home rental during the summer. Is that possible under the ordinance we have?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, it would be possible as long as they're following the rules, right? So if they wanted to rent less than 30 days, let's say in the summer
Then they would be under the vacation home rental?
Correct.
And then during the regular part of the year, they would be under the regular ordinance?
Then they wouldn't be regulated.
Actually, then they'd be under, they'd have to follow landlord-tenant law.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Mergan?
Yes, thank you. Then on page, I think it's page six, under expiration of provisional use. Final thing says, two years after approval. If the use is not established, how does establishment occur?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan Yeah, the establishment would be them applying for and obtaining a license. So if they, if somebody applied for a short-term rental for zoning, and they didn't get their license, their lodging license, then it would expire after two years. Their provisional use, their zoning license, their zoning approval would expire.
It'd be just like any other permit to do anything, it'll expire if you don't act on it.
Right.
Okay, that means they acted on it.
Right, we have a tie, which would be the license, so I think we're okay there.
Angie, and this might be, well, any more questions on the highlighted portions that staff has done so far? Commissioner Clark, you?
Kind of, it's actually more of a roadmapping thing, so I don't know whether it belongs here or not. We will eventually get to the place that says, if you don't go through the process, we will determine what the consequences are, because we've got a lot of people out there apparently who are doing this unofficially, informally, in violation of our process. It seems to me we might want to consider adding something in this section, and then maybe again at the end, just so it's hard to miss that you have to go through this process. In part because it says registration shall be required, and here are these things. So at the end, perhaps, we just may want to have staff consider, how do we make sure that it's impossible to miss, that you really do have, there's going to be consequences if you don't follow this?
I'm up to page eight. It says
Commissioner Mergan, could you just reference that bottom number on the page?
Yeah, and whatever the section and number is.
It says 6.74.
6.74, I'm on, okay, I was on
Okay.
6, 6 dash 74 then. Says, "Planning Commission may impose conditions that will reduce the impact of the proposed use on neighboring properties", and then it goes on to about limiting to a fence. Now, can we also put in there the planning commission or the county board?
And actually, Mr. Chair, I was going to suggest we strike that and just says the county, because it has to come to the county board. The planning commission on their own can't do anything.
So I'm thinking here, you know, the vegetation, the screening, oh, it takes forever for it to grow then. The privacy fencing, you know, six foot or eight foot, adding something like that possibly? What are your thoughts on that, Angie?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan, the fencing and screening has definitely been brought up a lot during your public hearings on some of these. It's really a choice. How, how do you want the county to require a fence of a certain size and a certain height as a requirement? To your first point, that definitely should be changed to planning commission. When this section was first written, the planning commission had final say on intermuses, so that was just a miss. We'll get that changed, and perhaps we change, say, the board or department, because there may also be some of these that are provisional, and then the department may want to have an opportunity to place conditions, which gets really gray. But fences do make good neighbors, right? That's kind of general zoning rule, but do you want to require it? That's up to you.
Oh, Mr. Chair, one of my concerns would be, when you brought up Commissioner Mergan about how long vegetation can take, totally get that. I'm thinking about lakes now, not about a neighborhood. In a neighborhood even, fences change what neighborhoods look like, but does that mean we'd be saying you have a fence from shore all the way through? Then what does that look like in terms of what the lake looks like and what the use and enjoyment is for each other? And if neighbors actually do get along, how easy or hard is it? I don't know, it's just an interesting thing, or thinking about some of the ones we've had where you've got different levels. So after that, I'm feeling a little conflicted about requiring that versus something else.
I was thinking it could be on a basis for each individual one.
And I think their language permits that right now.
Yeah, because you might have properties change hands, and then, you know, they really get along good, and it's, huh, can we take the fence out? And it's like, well, we can't
Heck, no, I don't want Or I'm not going to do this anymore, so I'm taking the fence down, and the next-door neighbor's mad because the fence came down. Well, they can't do anything about it, because I'm not renting out.
Likewise, if there's patios next to each other and you're very short setbacks. I mean, you could be eyeball-to-eyeball with the peoples on the other cabin.
Yeah.
So on an individual basis?
Yeah, I think that's what the language says.
Yeah.
It may, they may be but not limited to, could include but not limited to. I think that might get to what you're wanting.
And it could be a requirement if, you know, as a condition, it could be, certain parcel might say, oh, we should have it here.
Mr. Chair, if you remember the public hearing you had on Pearl Lake not too long ago, the one that ultimately was denied, we did give some options for what a privacy fence, if you will, would look like and how it would change along the property line based on the requirements for fencing. So I think allowing it based on the property is, I think, is going to make your most sense, right? Because if you have properties that are a great distance apart, or you have a lot of natural vegetation, or you have topography changes, and a fence isn't going to do any good anyway, it was kind of a moot point. So planning commission and the board typically haven't imposed this condition, but I think the board was probably prepared to do that had the vote went the other way on that interim use. So the way it's written, it could, it's discretionary.
Yeah, because I don't know if this would apply or hinder, but let's say it's a rural property. You know, if you require a fence and they get, you know, you're going to make them put a fence up, and there's nothing around them but farm fields?
On the same page, at the bottom where it's got the initial request and so on, I think, I don't know, maybe this would become too cumbersome, but I think I'd be more comfortable if the initial request was for one year, and the second one is two years, the third one, three years, and then add a fourth one, the five-year. Who knows, that become too cumbersome for enforcement and documentation and all of those things?
I suppose it depends on what requirements are every time your permit comes up. Like the septic, you know, three years on a septic.
You know, the first year being two, the first one being two years right away, I think is, I don't know, I think fairly long.
Mr. Chair, a question I have, two questions. One with that is if somebody doesn't meet the, you know, if they violate and they don't meet this, it could be revoked during that time. So that's one question I had, like, how does that fit in? I was wondering too, I had a feeling you were going to ask about the one-year. I was actually thinking about the, on the later end, maybe using a Commissioner Lenzmeyer carrot thing. Can we make it go longer eventually? If they're not, if they don't have violations, do they need to keep coming back? I mean, at some point, I mean, we're wanting to make sure that they're actually doing everything we want them to at the beginning, which is why it seems like our conversations have been after listening to folks shorter on the front end. But how many hoops do you want people to go through if they're actually following through? So that's a question I have.
Are there a lot of hoops to go through once you've established, and then it's just a continuation? If there haven't been any violations, there wouldn't be a lot of hoops to really jump through at that point, would there?
Be the fee, I suppose, would be one.
Right, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan, depending on which process you choose, if you choose a provisional use process for eight or less, then the process is administrative, and the fee would be less than if you went interim. If you have eight, more than eight, then it's interim under the proposal, and then the cost is going to be higher. And we can jump into that cost part, trying to think what else would be required. The license would remain the same, that's an annual license regardless of what we do here. The septic system, if it's, the septic system would be a rolling certification, meaning we would always have a certificate of compliance, so that if you chose that option. So, looks like Jen has something to add.
I wouldn't even be opposed to adding a fifth one, year after, you know, one year, two years, three years, five years, and then a 10-year, if they are through those first ones.
Jennifer?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioner. One to, one point that Commissioner Mergan had asked is the time after the permit's issued, either the provisional use or the interim use permit. There are times that there can be a few months before their license is issued, because perhaps they have to replace windows or put in a flow meter on their septic system. There's the licensing side of things, they have a checklist, they have to knock off all these things, get in their carbon monoxide detectors, their smoke detectors, fire extinguishers. So, point being, it might make sense if we're going to go with a one-year timeframe to say that the year starts when their license is issued. Because it's very common that the interim use permit is granted, and then it's a few months before they get their license, just due to getting all those other things taken care of.
That would be fine.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Yeah, the, I don't think that it's possible in one shot to design the perfect ordinance, but to make for a reasonable workload for staff, let's design something, if we must, that builds incentives into what we're all trying to accomplish and reward behavior that accommodates the overall picture. I think that an ordinance to control this stuff overall is rife with opportunities for disagreements and things like litigation, but once in a while, we are in a position to have to entertain a bad idea whose time has come. So to make the best of it we can, let's come up with some, if we can, creative incentives for desired behavior. Maybe we can cut down on some of the potential problems, but I don't know how you measure that, because how do you measure a problem? You avoid it if it never happened, you know, but you get the idea. And we won't get this right the first time. Whatever we come up with, I would suggest we build into it a annual review for whatever it is we adopt, and then some sort of periodic review for the properties that come into this. Much after that, I don't have a whole lot to add to this. Jeff, you've spent more time with this than I have. I looked at it more than, more from a big picture standpoint, but yeah. Thanks for taking a hard look.
And actually, I'd be okay with the initial one being two years, just for the fact, you know, like Jennifer said, if you don't get that right away, otherwise now you got to start it when the license is actually issued. Plus, if you look at, if you get, you know, one, one check mark a year, you know, so let's say you did get one in the first 12 months, you know, you kind of have that option then to still redeem yourself, you know, that second year. I mean, if you get another one, I just think that, you know, one year, you're talking, now the staff is going to have to, you know, depending on what he's going to do, you know, they're going to have to go through this. I mean, they have to do it with the lodging anyway, but I don't know, time flies, isn't it? If people are being good about it, you know, two years goes by fast.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, and I agree. Also, we've got a situation where we've got some folks that are going to have these vacation home rentals 52 weeks out of the year. And some people are going to maybe have them five weeks out of the year. And so, yeah, a one-year analysis on the first year, I don't think is necessary, of course, unless they have the violations.
Well, then it's going to come up.
Right, exactly. I don't want to get too philosophical, but taking off where Commissioner Lenzmeyer said, is where we're going with this is, is a huge undertaking and we're not going to satisfy everybody.
No.
I think there's a dead Greek philosopher that once said, if you're uncertain of your destination, no wind is favorable. So, and we've got a lot of people in the boat and we don't know which way the wind's blowing, so we're, we're not going to please everybody in the boat, so. All right.
Who's?
Monthen.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mergan.
Six dash seventy-five O, where it says the owners of vacation short-term rentals must enforce quiet hours from 10 to 7:00. I don't know how this is to be accomplished because if the owner is out of the area, to me, this would indicate that it's the owner personally that would have to do this, not their employee or their manager.
Sure.
You know, so how would that be accomplished if the owner's out of the area?
Would we need to say owners or agent of, or something like that?
Because the way it's written, to me, that's what it means.
But if it comes down to the owners having to make sure that whoever's renting it is, that's how I would read it. It's like, it's their responsibility to make sure who's ever renting it.
And maybe since Commissioner Mergan raised the question, we need to clarify that, that they have to make sure that it's not an asylum.
How are they going to enforce that if they're 100 miles away?
But if I rent to you, you know, I'm going to tell you, plus, you know, that these are the quiet hours, you know?
Well, should we build in an eviction process?
Is that an enforcement, though?
Well, no matter, I think, no matter what we do, we have to make sure it's enforceable on any of the parameters that.
It could be, I have a, I have a arrangement with my next door neighbor. I mean, we've heard that from some people, that they, they're the ones that say, hey, this is happening, so then you get it. But as long as somebody has tipped them, if they've contacted them and there's a problem, then they need to contact the people and say, you gotta stop this.
And I think that's part of a good neighbor.
Right, exactly.
Document too, because your contact information should be on. I, I like the idea of notifying the neighbors and maybe giving them a good neighbor sheet so that if something happens, here you go, call me up.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, I was going to ask about a broad-based question, I don't think we've addressed it yet, as far as ownership of the properties. Are we expecting that it's going to be an individual that owns a property? Or are we going to, is it, can a corporation own the property and a corporation have numerous properties on the, on the lake or in the area? And so now you don't have an individual that's responsible, you have a corporation that's responsible. I don't know.
And along with that, the question might not be, does Joe and Jan Persky have an LLC? That it's really about them, that they've set it up that way?
Correct.
That's, that is, that might be a corporation, but that's not the same as Hyatt or something like that.
Correct.
Maybe, Angie, you want to just maybe add what you were going to say?
Yes, Mr. Chair, to Commissioner Mergan's point on O, I think we can make that change so it could be owner or emergency contact. As we identified in P, they need to have someone available 24 hours a day. So the, the expectation with O is that somebody, the owner or the emergency contact, is responsible for enforcing the quiet hours. So I think we can make a slight change to that, and we're going to talk about enforcement a little bit later, too, so.
Okay, and the second part of that is, the information shall be accessible on the county website. Is it possible to put something in there that, when this license is obtained, that this person must provide that physically and writing to the next, to at least the next door neighbors? So when there's not a problem, all of a sudden the neighbors are trying to find things on the county website. I know I have trouble doing that, so.
I'm sorry, yes. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan, we could, we could indicate in this requirement that the information be provided, the contact information and phone number for both the owner and the emergency contact be provided to adjacent property owners, something like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, to Commissioner Persky's point about the ownership structure, we've talked a lot in our department about that. I think we've shared maybe a little bit of that in our August meeting, I don't really remember, but I know Commissioner Notch had sent me what City of Rockville does, they only allow vacation home rentals for issued to natural people, which is much different than an LLC, for example. The problem, I shouldn't say the problem, the reality of the situation is exactly what Commissioner Clark said. You could, you could say only one entity can have one rental, but then you're going to create a next one and a next one and a next one and a next one. There's no limit on how many LLCs a natural person can have, or a couple, or kids. So in, I understand in theory how you, how there's some desire from people in the public that some entity doesn't come up and buy a whole lot of these, but the answer is, even if they operate under, they could operate under one LLC or they could operate under 100 different LLCs, and they would be skirting the requirement. So that's the first point. The second point, and we're going to talk a little bit about that later, is what we want to try to have the board kind of think back to as well, is vacation short-term rentals is one of hundreds of land uses that we regulate in Strands County. Once we start, do we want to start having an LLC versus natural person ownership requirement for feedlots, for businesses? So just kind of keep that in mind, that would be the second prong to that.
One add-on that I had written down to that was limiting no more than two licenses per entity, you know, as a way to, but like you said, you know, you can, now you can have maybe two under that same entity, but then, like Angie says, now you create another entity, which, you know, can be expensive, too, you got taxes, you got, you know, there's people that do it have to decide whether it's worth it or not. Commissioner Mergan?
On the same page, R, where it says must be, the video must be stored for at least 10 days, to me, that seems a little short, if there's a complaint, because the government seems, law enforcement and all those things seems to move pretty slow. I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking maybe change that to 30 days? Or, I'm open for suggestions there?
Mr. Chair, I was kind of wondering with that is, I have to admit, I don't own one of those systems, so I don't know how long for, you know, a non-huge business entity, those recordings, what it takes to keep them. And it seems like there's other situations where it's like 15 days because if somebody's going to make a complaint, once they, I mean, we could make a contingent, if a complaint is made within that, you have to keep it longer, you know, as opposed to just them handling. So I, I guess I have some questions about how that works and, because I think I agree with your, if I'm hearing you right, I agree with your premise behind it, I just don't know what that costs, what it looks like, what's normal practices, but it would seem like the trigger would be, somebody shouldn't be able to make a complaint 60 days later and then they wouldn't have had it to prove anything.
Yeah, because you have to have a rolling camera video, basically.
Right, right. Like, yeah, so how long? I, I just don't know, maybe some, maybe staff knows how long.
You know, because a lot of people have Ring or something, you know, for doorbells and.
Right.
Cameras, which I don't think that stores anything, does it? Well, it'd have to be on all the time, right?
Right.
Because you'd have to be.
All the time. I just don't know how that works.
I don't either.
Mr. Chair?
Are they motion centered?
I, I am not, I'm not familiar with this either. Again, this was kind of thrown in there based on the public hearing on August 2nd. If this is an idea that you're toying with, I think we would need to learn more about what that system, what the systems look like.
Because, Mr. Chair, I mean, we know that, like, apartment buildings often have these and small businesses do. It's often so that if something happens and they want to file a report, right, or get insurance, they have it, but I don't, you know, I don't know how long those tapes last or what, you know, what kind of burden is, I mean, from your own protection standpoint, I could see where somebody might want it. Ironically, where, ironically, where we're talking about the cameras being, showing is going to be different than what the homeowner might want it to be, because they're going to want to know if somebody's trying to break in, and we're trying to see if people are creating noise on the outside, or if there, how many cars are, so what does that look like? So it would make some sense to me for us to get some more information about this. This could be a really helpful thing if somebody's willing to do it, also get the invasion.
Yeah, the camera possibility, the cost of those has come down dramatically, and it really isn't the cost of the camera itself, it also has to be hooked to some service, but that's, you know, that's all right. I'm, I'm concerned in the longer term, there's not much we can do about it, but there will be some creative attempts to take a run at the county's contingent liability. So, but I don't have any answer for that. That's like trying to predict the future, because that's what it is.
Mr. Chair, on that, on that same note, the other idea that I had would, as you're talking, would be, it's really, would be incumbent upon the, the owner, right, the person renting, to want this. So you can make it, you can make it optional or discretionary, because if we get a complaint and if they want to substantiate there was no issue, it's to their benefit that they have this.
Yeah, true.
So we could just, we could strike it all together, we could say it's encouraged or it's an option.
No, make it a requirement. The cost now isn't the issue it once was.
And it's for their own protection.
Just to provide context, I have Ring system, $100 a year, you get, for as many cameras as you want, basically.
Hmm, thank you.
And it stores for much longer than 30 days.
Okay, so that answers that question, okay.
So you could store it a little longer?
Yes.
Than the 10 days?
For a minimum cost.
So is it running all the time or only a few?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, then I would take note with Commissioner Mergan's idea to extend it over 10 days. It should be longer, 30 days or more would be good.
Although I would say somewhere we should probably say a complaint needs to be filed within a shorter period than that, because honestly, if you're, if you're doing a complaint.
I would think they were going to.
Right.
Complain on Monday morning.
Right, so it's, really, the trigger is the complaint, like, how long?
I wasn't thinking about the complaint time, I was thinking about how long it takes for the law enforcement and everything, any court things and so on, and all of a sudden it's gone.
Sure. So I guess, I guess what I was saying is, if, if the idea is that if there's been a complaint, you want to make sure that that tape is around for as long as it takes, which is what I think I'm hearing us say, that's what triggers it. It's if there hasn't been a complaint, like, after 10 days.
There's probably not going to be.
Then you would need to hold on to it, right? So it's really, if somebody makes complaint, as long as they're told, then they need to hold on to it. I mean, that's, but it sounds like, maybe I misunderstood you, Dr. Williams, with the tape being, or whatever it is, with the images, they'd just be able to be there and you'd just go back and access it?
Yeah, it's in the cloud.
Okay.
It's no, there's no.
Okay.
Storage on site.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I think I'm dealing with a personal family issue this morning, and that's why I was like, Dr. Williams knows about this.
Okay.
I trust you folks will continue on, all right?
Yep, well, we might not make final decisions.
Yeah, we won't settle a hash today.
All right. See you later.
Mine are stored at that price for 60 days, I just looked, so.
Oh, so 30 days would be fine?
And I think, I think they're 15 for free, or something like that, $100 a year, several cameras, 60 days.
$100.
This is one of the benefits of the timing of when we take this up. Usually, well, we have in the past attempted to do things like this in the middle of a season, and it doesn't work. So to do it now that people can prepare for the next season is, that's, I don't know how that came about, but good for us.
So, Mr. Chair, I think, Commissioner Mergan, you're suggesting that they store it for at least 30 days, is that correct?
That's where I was leaning, but I don't know, I'm just open, I just thought 10 days was awful short.
Okay.
I don't know if reasonable time is a good answer either, but.
Right.
Because I think, too, if the complaint isn't driven pretty quick, it's probably not going to happen.
Right, and then you don't need to. But it sounds like you can access it for a bit longer than, no matter what. That's good. We learned a technology item.
Okay, Commissioner Mergan, did you have another item on that?
Going into, some of the, I mean, they did a good job here of Environmental Services, did an excellent job of going to all these different counties and getting things. I don't know, what are your thoughts on the owner required to visibly mark property lines?
I think that's, was stated in the ordinance proposal, right?
Yep.
They had to get it surveyed.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chair, that actually could be considered two different things. So under the proposal, it's that they have their property surveyed, which would be different than marking the property lines.
Oh.
It, I guess, we would need to have a little bit more discussion. If, Commissioner Mergan, if you're thinking that there would be more than just the licensed surveyor stakes marking the four corners, then it would need to be, we would have to change our proposal.
I would think that would be good, and, I don't know, this is just something I thought, oh, should we have this or not? Again, it's something, I don't have any really strong feelings one way or the other with it, I just.
I suppose that could be anything from planting a tree there to.
Right.
Fence post or.
Mm-hmm.
Like, well, I mean, it wouldn't be the worst.
Right.
You know, because if you have people coming in to rent, well, let's see where exactly are my boundaries.
Right.
So you're just thinking the four places, because, you know, I mean, some places they'll stick up a, you know, some type of a post kind of thing, and then it might be on one end of the property and on the other end of the property, and then it's not necessarily clear in between. But again, I keep thinking about use of enjoyment, I mean, how many different, if we're only talking about that, that doesn't seem very invasive, if it's a tree or if it's something that shows that. So you can, you can point it out, yep, this is the property.
Maybe instead of, you know, jumping through all these here, I had one question related to if you did a rental license versus a IUP or a provisional use, maybe, Angie, if you want to maybe expound on pros and cons, if we did a rental license versus.
Mr. Chair, so getting back to Commissioner Mergan's idea, I think maybe where you saw that one was Douglas and Pope visually demarcate by signs, a fence, vegetation, or landscaping. So if you liked that idea.
Aiken County has just.
Was it Aiken, too?
Yeah.
Owner required to visibly mark property lines. I mean, the devil's always in the details here, right? You know, would we want an actual small little sign that said property line, property line going all the way around the four corners? Or is it just the survey laugh? I mean, laugh, you're not going to, that's not going to last forever.
Mm-hmm.
So it just depends on how far we want to go with that. If you liked one of those standards in particular, we could adopt something similar.
Kind of like the Douglas County one.
Yeah, I'd say, too, just, it's got to be marked, whoever's renting can see where they are.
What was that, Mr. Chair?
I, I would say, too, just something that indicates that, oh, these are the lot, lot corners.
Okay. Maybe I'm reading it wrong, but it would seem like, even though they're using different language, the Aiken and the Douglas ones could be the exact same things.
Mm-hmm. Okay, got it, thank you.
I think we should also stress the grandfathering in of those properties that have, I know it's been mentioned, but.
Yeah, I'd agree, too.
Of those properties that have not been an issue.
So, do you want me, Mr. Chair, to talk about your point related to provisional versus interim? Is that where you want to go next with this, or?
Well, or we could finish the chart and then discuss.
Okay, sure.
But maybe we'll just start at the first one and see if everybody is in agreement with what we should do there, and then just go down the list.
The, the chart as in the county comparison?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Mergan?
Just for clarification, gotten some, or I've gotten some correspondence about Section 204, where hotels are defined. How, these are not currently being defined as hotels, what's the difference as to when it is or why these are not defined as a hotel?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan.
It's unclear to me, you know?
Yeah, and we, again, the meeting we had last week with some, some property owners in the county, we talked a lot about that, and I think we fairly could say we agreed to disagree. The definition of hotel motel is in state statute, and it, and it basically identifies what a hotel motel. what a hotel motel is. We've adopted that by reference, the county zoning ordinance and ordinance 204, which is the lodging ordinance, both have adopted the same statute. Vacation home rentals were called out in 2008 as a totally separate land use category from hotels and motels. It was never intended or, from 2008 to now, it was never intended that vacation home rentals be considered hotels and motels. There's some desire, I believe, from people that we hold, that we would look at the definition of a hotel motel and indicate that all our vacation home rentals do fall under that, therefore you can only allow them in the commercial zoning district. So it's less about the definition and it's more about your land use category. So the suggestion that we, Shelley and I had last week when we met with others was that we could, in the hotel motel definition, say for purposes of this ordinance, this definition does not include short-term rentals. So I have an easy fix to that, but the concern is that we don't allow them at all, vacation home rentals. We only, we do require them to fall under the hotel motel. And that would be a completely different course than what we've been talking about today.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, my question about the, going through the chart is, if I recall correctly, because we've gone through it before and I'd certainly find going through it again, is this shows what the different counties, including ours, currently do. And we went through this and then the proposed ordinance changes aren't reflected in this. I mean, we don't have that in the side by side, do we? In this, this chart.
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner.
Current, right, not the.
This is the county comparison.
Right, including our current, but the, what we've already gone through.
Nothing new, yeah.
Right.
Correct.
What's in the draft here would be addressing each of these things. And I know we've gone through the chart before, happy to go through it again, but we don't right now have something showing what the proposed change would be with us comparing it to the other counties.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, I did not change.
That might be a nice thing for when we get to a public hearing.
Yeah, I didn't change that Stearns County column, if you will. It just says Stearns current.
Right.
Not proposed. But yes, we could definitely do a proposed current and proposed next to these others.
Be kind of a nice at a glance, right? So we could see if there's something that our eyes missed. Your eyes probably didn't miss anything, but ours, our eyes might have.
Yeah, because then, just for an example, on the first one now, you'd have either provisional use for less than eight, eight or less, or IUP for more than eight.
Right, yep, I can do that.
That'd be great. And if you wouldn't mind making it really like one of the bigger sheets, just so we can.
What's the anticipated timeframe for this whole process? When do you, when should we be shooting for? Well, a final decision, even though it won't be final, but I mean, have something with more beef. Where's the beef?
Miss, Commissioner Nodge, Miss, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I'll get it right. So the answer is it's really up to the board, but what I would say that you would consider is what you have today is, is, is current, right? We have a lodging ordinance, we do licensing, we have a zoning ordinance that calls these out as interim uses, we know what we're doing, we follow the process, we're taking into complaints, we're, we're administering the ordinance as it is. The interesting part about it, to get to Commissioner Lenzmeyer's point, really gets down to the townships. And we have a handful of townships that have moratoriums and honestly, they're really waiting for the board to do something. And so you can decide if you want to create that standard for them to then react to. I believe Munson's moratorium was put on first, I think that was in December, early January of '23, and then they can do a six-month extension, but.
The concern we'll get out of the township is added cost, and I don't blame them, but they do provide a very valuable service in terms of extra eyes and ears. They're the local folks, they know what's going on.
Yeah, and they, they can still have their own ordinances that can be more restrictive than the county, so.
And it would seem like we'd want to.
Probably got his enforcement though. You know, they don't have staff typically.
Right, well.
Wouldn't Stearns County still be in charge of their, of that enforcement?
No. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I know Shelley had shared an email that you had gotten on this, and I think you might have all gotten an email from Munson Township on this, on this issue and the relationship that the county currently has with our, with our townships is that we, under state law, they can do whatever they want to do, we do what we want to do, and they can't be less restrictive. So state law says they can be more restrictive and consistent with Stearns County. The memorandums of understanding that we have with 17-ish or so townships out of our 30-some are longstanding agreement saying you stay in your lane, we stay in our lane, we'll talk when we need to, we'll help each other when we need to, but we've never crossed the line of taking on their enforcement. Zoning administration wise, my staff and I and Shelley, we take calls every single day from townships where I sent out the township newsletter, we're happy to visit townships to help them through this, to help them through solar or their, the next thing, right? We're always willing to help them. We're help, we're willing to help them review a staff report, we're willing to go to a public hearing. Where, where we've never gone is, is enforcement. And they do, they, meaning townships, do have options under their association for attorneys. I think it would be a much broader discussion than just myself and the board if we wanted to start contractually taking on enforcement for townships. Would, would it only be vacation home rentals? Would it be everything? Obviously, we need our attorney involved because once, once they do their thing from a zoning administration standpoint, it doesn't come to me, it would go straight to an attorney. So typically, it's always been, or I shouldn't say typically, it has always been their attorney.
Why can't it be a voluntary thing on behalf of the township to be eyes and ears? We don't expect action, but we do appreciate information.
Absolutely. I, I.
Yeah, you can live with that.
We, we always would continue to cooperate and communicate with townships. Where the rub is going to be is if the county adopts something that they want to be different, they want to be more restrictive, they need to take on that responsibility. It's no different than a township who wants to have a half-mile feedlot setback or a township that wants to prohibit something. They, they take on that ownership. That's the local control that they, that townships typically want.
And I think in the Sock Center Herald, was it last week? They had the, because the city sock center obviously is part of Sock Lake, and they're having that internal discussion with the city on what to do with short-term rentals. So they had a good article in there in the last paper.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Clark.
It would seem like it would make sense, I mean, obviously to continue the practice of being eyes and ears and being cooperative, recognizing that it's not enforcement, but for us also to put in that we defer to a township if they, if they have something that is more restrictive because that's the way we operate, we want them to be able to do that. And then you were just bringing up something that I think is important, at least for the public to, to know, is that an awful lot of the not permitted places or the places that aren't following somebody's rules are not actually part of our jurisdictions, they're in cities. So, I mean, we, we have to remember that we can keep trying to communicate that most of the challenges that neighbors are currently experiencing, in addition to being worried about what could come in the next few years, totally get that, is from people who are not permitted, who haven't gone through our process, or they're part of a city and then we don't have jurisdiction anyways. But hopefully some of the cities will be working with us too, to be sharing information as well.
Mr. Chair, did you want to, not to jump over the county comparison, but did you want to get into some of the administration enforcement or to Lee's point, what's the end game?
I'm hoping we get, our end game is soon enough so that people can start anticipating these extra costs they're going to need to bear if we go through some of what we're talking about.
You're talking those last few pages of the handle.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Do you want to move into the administration and enforcement?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be, heck, at page 20. So administration, meaning what does our office do to facilitate these and, and complaints? So first option is we continue to investigate our complaints per our, this is our process. We really do strive to investigate complaints within 30 days. At any given time, we may have between 50 and 100 complaints in our department, so we do have to prioritize those. B, if the complaint is valid, we send a letter to the property owner, giving them a deadline to apply and a license or to discontinue the use. So about 10 years ago, we, we really, we, meaning the department, really shifted from a heavy hand enforcement to more of what Commissioner Lenzmeyer always coined guided compliance. So we start with, the purpose of this letter is to let you know that you're doing this thing and you're not permitted, here's what you need to do or discontinue. We give them a first letter, then we give them a second letter, then we give them an abatement order. And then after that point, if the abatement order isn't complied with, then it does go to, then we involve our attorney and then we decide what next steps to take. Is that a stipulation agreement? Is that a lawsuit? That have lawsuits happen a lot less than working things out administratively. So that's the direction that we really got from the board and that's really what we've been doing for the last decade. There's a lot of pros to that from our perspective. I think we have better relationships with property owners. I think we're, people are more apt to call us, contact us, see us more as a cooperative than just enforcement, but we could debate that on a different day. So that would be status quo, right? The next option, and some counties have went to this, they've hired an outside company to search for and contact these rentals. So it's basically, Granicus is one, you've probably heard of them, GovOS is another. Shelley and I did meet with both, both of those companies and got a little bit of information. Really what we learned is for the program to pay for itself, meaning in order for their services to get paid for, we would have to have at least 100 rentals. And it would also go back to the point of, do you want to pick this one land use category out of all of the others and, and target? Yeah, enforce it differently, thanks Shelley, enforce it differently than we do other things. What I know you've heard and you would continue to hear from concerned citizens is, well, it's incumbent upon them to have to complain, to monitor their neighbors. The answer is yes, we have a complaint-driven process in the county. We don't have enough staff to, there's no other really effective way to do that.
Angie, would this kind of be, either of these companies, it's kind of twofold? They're checking to see the ones that are permitted, if they're advertising for more than what they could have, and also the ones that maybe aren't permitted and they're advertising with a permit?
You could, we'd have to decide what, what that looked like, what contract we'd want to sign with them. I know Crow Wing County uses Granicus, they have over 1,000 rented.
They have a lot of them.
Yeah, they have 1,000 up there and obviously that program pays for itself. And I would also note that in Crow Wing, they're all permitted, none of them are interim. So it's, it's a, here's the standards, follow them. And these, what these companies provide is really a service to say, here's the ones that are not permitted. And then give us the list and then we take it from there. Obviously, there's financial cost to that.
So how many did you say we'd have to have in order for that to pay for it?
I think what Shelley and I heard, yeah, I'll let Shelley kind of weigh in, she did one of these on her own.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, we had a few conversations with these companies and really what it comes down to is if we don't have more than 100, it, they, they don't even call us back. Once they did their initial scrape, and then I said, we only have jurisdiction outside of municipalities in Stearns County, it went silent because we don't have enough that they found in their scrapes off of all those websites. They typically do 30 to 50 websites that they scrape. If they don't have enough of those, then we're not worth their time. So we're still, we're in the, we're not worth their time category currently, doesn't mean it won't change, but we really want to take a look at, is this an appropriate thing for us to do? Though they will, they can do licensing like Crow Wing does, and that's kind of a separate thing than zoning. I mean, it's permitted in the zoning category, but it's more like a liquor license or a tobacco license, it's a licensing process, which is also separate from our other licensing, which is the public health and safety. So at this point, I don't think, I don't think we're getting companies that are willing to, to find that it's worth their while and our while to have their service.
What, I don't know if you know this, but what would be their magic number and what numbers do we have?
Well, we think we're less than, we believe we're definitely less than 100. The question is, is what do we think? I, I think Angie and I, I think we're in the 50 to 60 category maybe, total, and we're, half of those are about, half are permitted. And we have a bunch that are on our in-process call list, you know, take down your website. We've had, you know, various stages of, of management. That be accurate? So we're definitely less than 100 in our county that we enforce, that we would have land use jurisdiction over.
Their magic number, you think, is about 100?
Yeah, that seems to be the case. They weren't overly excited when they scraped our stuff and, yeah, I think they found that there's a lot in the cities.
Which is kind of good, I mean, that means for the most part, there's not a lot of just random ones.
It could also mean that, you know, hey, people do come and get permits, they are working with us, we get information and we go through a process and, or we're just not in their huge target market yet. And as Commissioner Lenzmeyer said, we can also change over time. These aren't, once you make an ordinance change, we often see more ordinance changes in the future. So what we do today or tomorrow isn't permanent.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Clark.
And you told me that, I was kind of bummed because it, I mean, I'm glad, like you just said, Mr. Chair, that it means we're, we've got a low, lower number right now. But what is too bad is we don't have a great way to really be on top of who's out there doing this that isn't going through the process and how can we even go about finding them or doing something else or trying to encourage them to come in if we don't know who they are? You know, so does that mean, you know, do we, do we need an intern? Do we need, I mean, it's, it's too bad they won't do something at a lower level, but like, how do we get there? Or do we wait? I mean, maybe we just wait?
And maybe some of them are 30-day, you know, 30 days or more.
Oh, absolutely, right. So it may be that we just don't, but I guess what I, I've been thinking about is what we, we hear from a number of people who are living on the lakes and what they're concerned about. It's certainly a little bit easier to try to bring somebody into compliance and/or find them if you know they exist. And right now, we don't really unless somebody comes in. And that's what's hard is that puts neighbors kind of against neighbors, so it's too bad, but that's where we're at.
Mr., oh, sorry.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Yeah, we had a great idea that we haven't followed up on and maybe we can at this meeting, but let's not forget about considering possible incentives for folks to follow whatever we come up with. And I don't have any bright ideas right now, but I don't know if you're, since you're reviewing other jurisdictions, if you take a look and see if any of them have any of those incentives or, well, you get help wherever you get ideas, so.
I think the biggest incentive is if they don't have, the biggest incentive to me is if you wouldn't have to apply every year or every two years.
Yeah, we should build more into it.
If you're doing what you're supposed to do, you should get the benefit of a longer term.
Mr. Chair, one of the ideas that we had to go along with Commissioner Lenzmeyer's approach would be regardless of the number of people you would, you would be renting to, your occupancy, the over eight, under eight, is if we do receive a complaint or documented violation, you're automatically an interim use. You could do that too. Is that enough an incentive for people to get your permit first? We've been, we, we're trying to do what we can. We contacted the Realtors Association, we get calls, probably not daily, but definitely weekly, I'm looking at buying this, can I rent it out? That's, that call is very, very common. To Commissioner's Clark point. To Commissioner's Clark point, we could hire a Granicus or GovOS, it's just a matter of the cost, it wouldn't pay for itself, so the county would be needing to budget for that. The second part of that is this is not, this part, the outside search company would not be a part of the zoning ordinance, this is administration. So you don't have to have a public hearing if next month, next year, six months from now, you say, you know what, I really think it's time now, then you ask Environmental Services to come back with what that would look like.
In lieu of time here, would it be possible to, Commissioner Clark mentioned, you know, the chart, putting in the updates or comparisons, current, you know, with proposed, maybe having a conversation, you know, at a meeting and then if we feel we want to set another public hearing, we could. I know Commissioner Clark has a family issue, too, that's coming up here, but, so I don't know. What thoughts, if we have enough information that staff can prepare something to?
I would guesstimate that this discussion will generate questions or ideas, at least I hope they do. And let's see what comes through the mail slot. And I'm not prepared to make any decisions today, obviously, but I don't know that we need an agenda slot as big next time as this is, but yeah, let's keep, let's keep this going.
Would that last meeting in October be enough time to maybe create our first one in November?
Yeah, we got to hear from the other folks.
Right, Mr. Chair, we were anticipating if the board, you would not have to have a public hearing. If you wanted another public hearing, we were, we had not talked to Dr. Williams about this, but we were proposing at the soonest to give townships an opportunity. Where's my, I got to get to my cheat sheet. November 15th would be the soonest in order, I mean, I can have my part done, but you want to give the townships an opportunity. What I believe I hear the board kind of leaning towards is some changes. And so we would schedule a public hearing if that's your desire, we would notice townships, give them an opportunity to have their meetings to talk. The other idea that Jennifer and I were talking about last week is if you made a change, you can make it effective January 1st. You have a cutoff date. And then it was Jennifer also suggested, what if we had a meeting with all the townships in between, you know, November 15th, whatever's decided, and then January to help them understand how that would affect them or how do they then want to move forward on their ordinance? That would give them an ample amount of time to put their house in order, if you will. So, and I don't know if Shelley's going to weigh in on your ideas with attorneys?
Yeah, I did contact Mike Corey, who is a township attorney and wanted to have a conversation, haven't heard back yet, just because I think it's important that they're aware of kind of what we're proposing since they work with so many of the townships in our area. So I think a township, some kind of a township meeting is necessary. I guess it's up to you as a board if you want to have another public hearing or if you just want us to make some of those changes so you have a third or another column, which is current and then proposed county, and then we can just put that in as information into a packet. Is that what you're looking for, Commissioner, not?
I guess that's kind of what I was looking for.
And then we could just have that conversation at a next meeting, toward the end of a meeting?
Yeah, just to kind of go through it, make sure it's kind of what we maybe all are on the same page and not a lengthy discussion like this.
Right, it would just be, here's what we heard, here's the comparison, any comments? And essentially, an agenda item, not a public hearing, just an agenda item for you to finish this conversation out is what I heard.
Seems like you're at that point to me.
Yeah, because then we can get it to the township or get to the townships and get this maybe in effect by the first of the year, like you are thinking.
And then if you want to choose a public hearing at that point?
Yeah, I was just going to say the township officers are meeting later in October, at least it'd be a chance to alert them and then hold another meeting with them if we thought that was appropriate.
Typically, Mr. Chair, if you have changes to this extent, you've wanted to give townships six to eight weeks. So are you, maybe I'm the only one in the room that isn't super clear, do you want to schedule a public hearing for November 15th or not at this time?
I guess I hadn't, wasn't planning on.
Okay. So then that January 1st would likely become more like February or?
So I'm not sure, it would seem to me we could still meet that, Mr. Chair, sorry. Meet that January 1st, we'd just be meeting with the townships. I mean, if we could get the chart to on, that would give them six weeks to be having some conversation with us about that. Like you said, we've got some meetings coming up.
So take the information, put it in the chart, provide that information to the township and see if they have any conversation with that. We can have additional conversation with the township officers. I believe that's coming up.
Actually, next week, after your, after the board meeting, we're going to meet with the directors of the Township Association.
Yes, we could have the chart for that. Is it possible to have the chart for that?
The chart's easy, it's more of what else are we going to do? Yeah, so I think Shelley's got a handle on it, I'll just, she'll tell me what to do.
I'm thinking the red highlight, you know, the proposed changes.
Yep, get that out to them.
Conditions in here would be good. You know, one thing that we didn't talk about, which I made a note of on the fees portion of it, you know, if we do a IUP, you know, it was 550, I don't know what the new number is for 2023, but then the provisional, you have proposed, you know, $400. My thing is, why shouldn't they both be the same? I mean, the goal is to recapture some of your time, correct?
Yes, typically, we are in a recapture, it's a percentage because we typically do subsidized fees in the county. But that's up to you as a board and provisional would be not with a public hearing and the interim would have public hearing.
So you're allowing for the extra time?
So that would be the difference in, or part of the difference, I would say.
Right, I looked at that and we have, you don't have Planning Commission per diems, you don't have all the extra staff time, you don't have the imaging, it's, it could be less.
So the other option on fees also in that incentive role would be, you know, if you get through your first two years, do you want it to be a reduced fee if they have no violations? You know, so we could incentivize the non-violation situation because they will always have an annual lodging license fee. So that has to stay because it's always an inspection annually. But on these provisionals or some, we could look at some structure that way.
Okay, yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Mr. Chair, I'd be okay with that, too, and then just recognizing to the extent that's provisional use, you'll still have the per diems, so we'll just be subsidizing those more. But I like the idea of giving incentives and still might think we would consider adding a fourth one where somebody could get a longer period if they've gotten through all the hoops, as it were, which I think is one of the things that you were suggesting as well, Commissioner Mergon.
Commissioner Mergon, are you thinking like the long, the last term can be maybe 10 years?
That's what I was thinking of, adding some things, but I mean, it's not something that I really, really strong opinions on.
Well, if you figure if you got a two, a three and a five, you got 10 years, I don't know how long people actually own some of these properties.
I wanted to add the shorter one at the beginning, too, though. And the longer one at the end, I don't know.
Yeah, I want to involve, you done the homework.
Okay.
We'll come back with that.
So at this point, Mr. Chair, just for the public that's here and listening and that will follow up with lots of emails to me, the answer is we do, we're going to change the, change what we've heard today with that column, that spreadsheet, and at this point, we do not have a public hearing scheduled.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have anything else to add? Shelley, Angie, Commissioners? All right, well, I guess you guys kind of have a, the muddy water is hopefully a little clearer, but yeah, that was the only thing on our agenda today, so with that, we'll adjourn.